I'd like to call the Schuylkill Township Board of Supervisors meeting together. Shall we have the Pledge of Allegiance of the flag placed?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to be by the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We ask all the attendees that are going to be speaking to sign in the podium if you have not already done so, please. If you make a comment, please wait to be recognized by the chair, come to the podium, speak clearly, and identify yourself who you are. We will, the meeting is being videotaped. If anyone is recording the meeting so that all attendees of the meeting are aware of it, is there anyone else? Thank you very much. So we'll move right into the agenda. Board of Supervisors minutes. Everyone read it, I hope?
Yep.
The only thing I would do is I would change on the minutes. I think that everything should be underlined. There's a number of underlined of the names of people that talked that aren't underlined. I think they ought to be all underlined. And so it's cohesive for the whole thing. And that's throughout the entire document. Other than that, anybody else have anything on the minutes?
No, I gave Madeline an edit a couple of weeks ago when they first came out.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have any comments on the reports?
Well, we have to vote on the minutes, I think. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments as amended in writing on the minutes as well as your comments.
I'll second.
The chairman's comments.
I'll second the motion.
A little fair?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Our treasurer's not here tonight, she's in Germany. She'll be gone for about a week or two. Martha Majeski, who sits right over here, am I right? Excuse me, I'll talk a little louder. Two-minute reports, does anyone have anything on the two-minute reports?
No.
Nope.
Our regional planning meeting, which is usually the last Wednesday of the month, was delayed until tomorrow night instead of last week.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you very much. The payment of the bills, even though our treasurer's gone, she's sent us an email of the treasurer's report. Our township manager emailed her the treasurer's report of what was going on and such, and she sent a message back to us saying that everything was okay, bills are okay to be paid, and everything's all right. Do you have anything to comment on that at all minute? Anything on the bills? Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the payment of the bills.
Second.
A little favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next item is our budget, 2015 budget. I have a couple of comments for all of you. Don't tax, don't tax, don't tax me. Next, tax is really a dirty word anymore. If anything you like, any word except tax will do. Next to it, spending. Don't like taxes, we don't like to spend. As such, spending and tax hikes are distortionary at our township level. The voter, you, our taxpayer, will punish any of us who in any way threaten to raise them, but does not accede to cutting them. But our property taxes, our county, our police forces, our roads, our firefighters, and pensions cost money, even when you kept them as much as you will tolerate. As such, the 2015 Schuylkill budget is a balanced one and will continue at no increase, which has occurred now for over seven years in this township. We're doing a very good job of managing our expenses and your money. Thanks and kudos go to our township manager, our treasurer, and all the township employees, and yes, to my colleagues, who have been prudent in ensuring our spending and dollars utilized are in accordance with the desires of our township residents. It goes to show, though, if any of you have comments on our budgets and our taxes, it would sure be very nice for you to stop talking at our meetings here and come to the budget meetings. That's what we have them for, for you to bring up your concerns at the budget meetings, not when we're ready to pass something or do something on the budget. We work very hard at this. We have two budget meetings, or we would even have three or four if it was necessary. But we don't see, we had one person show up at a budget meeting, just one. So either you're very happy, or you don't have any changes to it. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to pass our 2015 budget.
So move.
Second.
A little favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have a, I have a very nice thing to talk to you about. We've received, the township has been awarded the Green Corridor Award by the Audubon, Pennsylvania Bird Town, Bird on a Wire program. This program promotes local government's efforts in conservation, sustaining healthy, environmentally sound communities. Schuylkill Township will receive $1,000 and a bird carving in recognition of the Riparian Buffer Workshop presented to our residents by the Environmental Advisory Council on October 9th, from the board to all our EAC volunteers for their hard work and dedication to our community, and especially, we should mention Barbara Heisey, because she's done an outstanding job in getting and putting all this together, and you should be very proud of this, that we received this award. Thank you very much, Barbara.
Mary Ellen.
Thank you. Fall cleanup days, the township leaf yard will be open for our residents in this Saturday, December 6th, from 8:00 to 12:00, for residential drop-off of leaves. Valley Forge Fire Company's annual tree lighting ceremony will be this Friday, December the 12th, starting at 7:00 PM. The event is open to the community, bring your family and friends. There'll be a short program on the apparatus building, reminding us of the meaning of the holiday, followed by the lighting of the tree outside. Santa will be on hand to greet the kids with photographs. So it'd be nice if all of you would come.
At the main station, not the substation, at the main station, down off the Valley Park Road.
Okay, thanks. To stay in touch with what's going on in the community, I would advise or welcome you to please join our mailing list on the township website, so if you would. All right, any other announcements? Barbara, do you have anything from the Schuylkill Township? Or Schuylkill Heritage Center?
It's a little far ahead, we don't do anything in January, February, given the vagaries of the weather, but in March, Jerry Kirkpatrick, who is the managing partner of Environmental Standards, a very respected environmental firm in Schuylkill Township, will be giving a presentation at the Schuylkill River Heritage Center at the Foundry on reinventing industrial landscapes. So it should be a really interesting presentation.
So move forward, legal matters, Bill?
Just one matter, Fred. From the DePolo case, there was a new filing in federal court against different township supervisors and zoning hearing board. I'd like to discuss that briefly with you in the executive session. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We'll move into new business, the municipal separate stormwater management publication requirement, any discussion on that?
Fred, I can, I can address that for you.
Would you please?
As part of the township's NPDES permit, which is a permit that has come down from EPA and is administered by DEP, you are required to provide educational outreach opportunities to the general public as to what the MS4 program entails. So we've provided copies of two EPA fact sheets, which I see Mary has made copies of there up here on the table for anyone in the audience if you're interested. That discussed the NPDES permit and the MS4 program, and also a component of that program, which is the identification and elimination of illicit discharges, which are basically any water discharge to a storm sewer system that is not comprised of rainwater. So if there's a sanitary sewer connection to a municipal storm sewer, that would be considered an illicit discharge, and that needs to be corrected. So there's a fact sheet on that particular component of the program, and then in probably mid to late February, we hope to have a public presentation for you, a PowerPoint presentation, that we will then make available to anyone who's interested in viewing that, and we'll hold a public meeting, and that will fulfill another requirement of Schuylkill Township with regard to your NPDES permit.
How about pool water?
Hang on, one at a time.
I'm sorry. Pool water?
Pool water, if it's dechlorinated, is, is okay. If it's not dechlorinated, you cannot discharge it to a storm sewer.
Maybe we can incorporate that. We have four free meetings a year at the Phoenixville Country Club, and we usually have them in March.
Yes.
So my thought might be to incorporate this into our March program at the Phoenixville Country Club. I think that would give broad distribution to as many of our township residents as possible.
Yep, and we did something like that a year or so.
Exactly.
Another way to disseminate that information is to possibly put your presentation on our website.
Absolutely, we can do that.
John?
Yes.
Is, is there anything in our ordinances that we should add or such like this? It says on page two, through an ordinance or other regulatory mechanism, is there anything else we need to?
No, Fred, there is not, because your ordinance currently addresses illicit discharges.
How about firefighters' water and such?
Firefighters' water discharge is permitted.
Okay, okay.
So that's all I have to report on that. Yes.
Good question.
There's no, I'm not aware of any distinction as to how far physically away from a storm sewer that discharge would be considered illicit or not illicit. The point is more, what is that discharge comprised of? Does it have the ability to find its way into the storm drainage system? Whether that's a storm pipe that's in the road, or directly to a stream, or the resident of that, that type of a discharge, if it's not comprised entirely of rainwater, except for some, some qualifying things like what I mentioned earlier, dechlorinated pool water, is, is okay in EPA's eyes. There's no other distinction that I'm aware of.
Okay, anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues? All right, the next item is the guarantee of loan for the Valley Forge Fire Company.
If I can, Fred, the fire company has applied for a low-interest loan through the Pennsylvania Office of the State Commissioner, and the problem is, in order to get that loan, the township needs to guarantee it, but the requirement for the means of guarantee is very complicated. We need to present a certificate of approval for the municipality to issue a general obligation note in the amount of the loan. So I checked with the State Department, I received a pile of paperwork that needs to be enacted, including a new ordinance, legal opinion, certificate of insurance, a number of other things that have to be done. So we're working on it, at the same time, we're trying to figure out if there's a way to get around this by holding some of the funds that are due to the fire company in a separate escrow account till the loan is paid off. I don't have an answer to that yet, and I hope to have an answer at your next meeting, told by Kim Culver, there's no immediate rush on this, but they would like to get it moving. So my answer is, it's complicated, I hope we don't have to go through all of this, if we do, we do, but I need another month.
Can you explain the term, can you explain the term general obligation?
Well, if we're going to be a guarantor, the law assumes that we have to assume that we have to pay the money. So townships can only borrow so much money, there's a cap on what you can borrow, and you have to evaluate whether we're going above that cap. And in order to make sure that the state is protected on their loan, they have to be sure we can pay it back and have money to pay it back. So it's all belts and suspenders on guaranteeing repayment to the state of this loan, assuming the default.
But it's not necessarily a movement of money?
No, it's all just guarantee in the way they want to do it.
So you recommend you table this for this?
Table it for one month.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to accept this?
I make a motion that we table this decision for one month.
I've asked for a month to fix it up, Fred.
A little favor?
Cross all your t's, dot all your i's.
Oh, no, okay. I call for a motion?
I did make the motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, a little favor?
Aye.
We could have just called for, I could have called for it, and if nobody answered, it would have been tabled anyhow, so. Motion to approve the letter of the state representative in support of and requesting state funding of the Phoenixville Area School District proposed traffic planning improvements. A letter has been written, and we need to discuss it a little bit, and so everybody that's here, you haven't seen this, I'm going to take the, take it and read the whole letter so you all are aware of what's going on. Dear Senator Deniman Kemp and Rafferty, that's who it's going to. Phoenixville Area School District proposes to construct a new elementary school, earlier education center on the north side of Pot House Road, State Road 1036, and west of Route Road, State Road 0029 in Schuylkill Township, Chester County. The proposed school will accommodate 1,229 students, 100 faculty and staff, and it will be served by 20 school buses. In conjunction with the proposed school, extensive access and off-site intersection improvements are proposed. Extensive coordination has occurred between Pennsylvania School District, Area School District, and Pendot District 6-0 and Schuylkill Township pertaining to the scope of the roadway improvements to be provided in conjunction with the elementary school development. Traffic improvements to the following are being considered. One, State Road and West Pot House Road, Hollowell Avenue intersection, including turn lanes on Pot House Road and State Road. Two, a new traffic signal at West Pot House Road and State Access Trotters Drive, including turn lanes, and three 15 mile per hour school speed zone, limit zone, on West Pot House Road at the site frontage. The purpose of this letter is twofold. First, Schuylkill Township supports Phoenixville Area School District efforts to improve an existing intersection, as well as having the foresight to request signalization of the entrance to the proposed elementary school complex Trotters Drive, the driveway to Pickering Glen, a 48 single-family home development. We believe the improvements will alleviate regional traffic congestion in this heavily traveled area. The proposed newly signalized intersection will also provide a safe crossing area from the proposed school to a walking path located in the Pickering Glen development that ultimately connects to the pathway to the Freedom Valley YMCA Phoenixville branch, as well as providing easier ingress egress for the Pickering Glen residents. Second, Schuylkill Township is requesting that your office provide assistance to Phoenixville Area School District in obtaining state funding for the cost of these improvements. The intersection of Pot House and State Road has been on Pendot's radar since 1970, when they acquired larger right-of-way areas along State Road and Pot House Road for future improvements. Pendot has never, excuse me?
Yeah, move ahead.
Thanks a lot. Has never moved ahead with improvements to that intersection. However, Phoenixville Area School District is willing to look at providing these much-needed Representatives of Schuylkill Township would be happy to meet with you and Phoenixville Area School District representatives to discuss potential state funding for the roadway improvements associated with the proposal of the Phoenixville Area School District Elementary School Complex. We look forward to working with you and providing whatever information assistance you may require. Sincerely, Mary R. Bird, our township manager, courtesy copies to the Board of Supervisors and Dr. Alan Fagley, the Superintendent of Schools.
I had amended this, Fred. The Regional Planning Commission reviewed the situation, and we unanimously approved a resolution to include the Pot House Road and Charlestown Roads intersection, requiring light improvements. We know that the train hasn't gone there for at least 20 years, and there's still a traffic light there. And we'd also like to recommend eternally there, going to be a lot of school buses that will be going towards, say, Evergreen Acres. And knowing Pendot, as I do from my work in Phoenixville, they move slower than a glacier, so therefore, whatever we want, we should ask for upfront with as much support from our state legislators as we can achieve. So I would like to make a motion to strongly approve the beautiful letter that Mary wrote with the addition of the Pot House and Charlestown Roads intersection. I've discussed this with Stan Johnson immediately after our regional planning group approved it at our meeting last month, and I think we ask our state legislators for help. There's going to be increased traffic, we want to make sure things go more smoothly for all of us. So that's my suggestion.
Before you can make the motion for that, we have to pass the motion to send the letter in first.
Okay.
Okay, then we can go on and amend the motion or add it to it, include it in the motion if you want to do it that way.
Okay. Can I make a motion to approve the amended version of the letter with point number four?
Sure you can.
Okay, that's what I would like to, make a motion to approve this letter with adding a fourth place for Pendot improvements to occur.
Do I hear a second? Just hang on just a minute, please.
I'll second it.
All right, the motion has been made, it's been seconded. Do I hear any discussion from my colleagues?
I just have a, just a one-word question.
Sure.
You, I think you drafted this, Mary?
Okay.
Towards the bottom of the first page, there's a reference to Pendot's radar. I know the slang, it's that they're, they're, somebody's concerned about it at some point along the line, but do they have it on a plan? Do we know that?
On their plan?
Yeah, on any plan.
No, I mean, everyone, I shouldn't say everyone, but it does show on plans for surrounding areas that it was widened.
Okay, okay, all right, so I was just thinking that if there was a plan we could reference, it might be a little.
All right.
Do you have to get approval for?
Could you just come up to the recording, please?
Peter Mercury, President, Pickering Glen Home Association. Do you have to get approval from our residents to put our name in that letter?
No.
You don't? Okay. So regardless of what it says, our residents are in agreement with what that letter states? Is that what you're saying?
What we're saying is, we are petitioning our state legislators for financial help for all of us as taxpay residents of Schuylkill Township, to work with Pendot in the best way possible to make driving less arduous.
But we are taxpayers.
So are we all.
Right? And we don't agree with a lot of the statements that you made in that letter. Is it legally binding?
I'm pointing on you, if I may, Pete, you can write your own letter, association can write your own letter.
We don't want to write a letter, we just don't want to have our name involved in that, in that letter.
Government doesn't work that way.
That's going to make it seem like we are in agreement with all the benefits that supposedly we're supposed to be receiving.
Pete, this is action of the board.
I understand.
And if you don't like it, there are various things you can do, including writing your own letter, contesting it, whatever you want, but the fact that the board writes a letter means that the board supports the contents of the letter. If you don't sign it, you're not bound by it, but you know, not every letter that the Board of Supervisors writes is going to satisfy every person. So the fact that you're a citizen doesn't mean that you can control what they write. So you're not bound by it, you didn't sign it, but they have a right to send it as your elected representatives, that's all.
But do we have the right to state that we don't agree with putting Pickering Glen's name in that letter because we don't?
Write your own letter, and you're here, you're here, you're here saying that you don't, you don't approve it, that's fine.
It could be noted in the minutes, that you, that you're speaking for the association.
So basically, what we have to do is write our own letter disapproving what you're going to be sending to?
You wouldn't even know that this letter was going to be written if I hadn't said that we, in that, there's so much interest from your Pickering Glen and from Meadowbrook Lane, I suggested it be put on the agenda so you were all aware of everything that's going on with this progress.
When was it put in the agenda?
When a letter goes out from the township, we don't have to bring it up on the agenda or let everyone else know, okay?
Well, I didn't see any information going out about a letter going to state senators, and I don't believe that we should be included in that letter, being that we are in disagreement with a lot that is going on. That is not right. So, because, you know, I for one would say, okay, so you're saying in that letter that you're getting approval from the residents?
No.
No, no.
Pete, may I, may I just, what we can easily do is delete the name Pickering Glen. The walking path is not traversing the interior of your residential development. The walking path is in the public right-of-way. So what we can easily do is to talk about a walking path, period, without naming Pickering Glen.
That would be fine.
Good, that's a good compromise.
However, I asked, I'll throw the question back to you again. You're, you represent Pickering Glen, am I correct?
Yes.
Do all your constituents or all your people agree with what you're saying about Pickering Glen, to take it out of the letter?
No, but we, I'd never proposed the question. You didn't tell us that you were going to put a letter together. So if I'd have known, I would have been able to come.
There's a lot of things we have to do when a developer comes in and when things are done.
Pete, this, this is not intruding on your privacy or your residential development. What it is doing is sending a very strong signal to Pendot that we and the borough of Phoenixville are all in a coalition looking for improvements to the traffic situation. It's horrible now, so, you know, Pete.
Sir Barbara, why didn't you do it 10 years ago? Why are you doing it now?
Do you know what, Pete?
Why?
I will tell you, in 1995, I got $2 million working with Herman Johns and the president of Borough Council to synchronize the lights on Route 23. They didn't make any changes to the road. Do you know how long it took Pendot to institute the synchronized lights for peak traffic time? It took them almost 10 years, till 2007. So when you, when you petition Pendot for something, you have got to do it in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Are those lights on 23? Yeah, they are.
They're supposed to be.
Pete, sit at the podium, please.
I'm, I'm, you know, representing our development, and if you had let us know that you were writing this letter, I would have gone to my residents and talked to them and asked them if they felt comfortable putting our development in, because what you're saying in that letter is that everybody agrees that we're going to make all these great improvements and benefit, and it benefits Pickering Glen. That's what it says in the letter, and that's what it is going to, you know, have this senator or whoever, you know, when they decide about, you know, giving you money, is going to give you money. And regardless of if you, if you don't get the money from them... And regardless of if you, if you don't get the money from them, as far as payment, if you don't get the money, then the school district is just going to charge us anyway for making those improvements. So it really doesn't matter to me. What's important is that you're saying that we agree with that letter, and that is not right.
Okay. You made your comment. That's fine. Thank you.
A quick question from Mary on this subject. Mary, when was our agenda posted on the Internet for this meeting?
Um, Monday or, Monday, I think. I waited after the holiday.
Okay.
Just to get any more comments.
So for two days, this particular agenda item has been publicly available.
Good point.
Yeah. But you knew about composing the letter.
Just take out Pickering Glen.
How long ago? But the letter wasn't... But the letter wasn't on the list, though. The letter wasn't on the list, though.
No, no.
I mean, you can apply nothing from an agenda item.
Well, the letter won't be... Letter won't...
Just a minute. If you have anything to say, come to the podium, please.
That it's not a position, Mr. Morrison, to say that it was posted as an agenda item when there's no details on the agenda.
Well, they're fully aware, having come to every meeting, that the school district plan is, is sort of, directly impacts traffic to Pickering Glen.
I understand.
And, and, and just about every, every meeting we have, this topic comes up in one fashion or another. So, you know, it's there.
Didn't reference Pickering Glen.
I know, but the topic comes up because of the, the over-interest on walking trails and a reference to walking trails throughout the township. You've made a reference to their development in a letter, and they've got a concern with that. He doesn't need to be attacked because he's speaking for his development or challenged that he doesn't have the right to speak for his development. He's elected as an officer of his development, and he's coming here. And you want, you guys are, you're, Mr. Perry, you're saying that people don't come to the meeting, and all of a sudden you're challenging him because he came to a meeting and he's speaking for his residents. It's, that's exactly the way, so he, you know, that's my problem.
This is not, this is not a pejorative comment on Pickering Glen, number one. Number two, yeah, it's, it's a reference to a traffic situation that Pickering Glen, unfortunately or unfortunately, is, is a part of only because of their intersection. All right? So, you know.
And that's, and his point is if you, if you want to reference him, then you have more than enough opportunity to discuss with him. If you're going to position with a state senator and reference his development, then it's not difficult to reach out. He's been here, he's been here for meetings for years.
What's a downside?
Michael, may I...
It's not what a downside. The question is that you can reference him. If you, what is the advantage of referencing the development in the letter?
You're missing the point.
I'm not missing the point.
Yes, you are.
It's a general reference point.
It's a general reference.
It doesn't necessarily have to, have to be referenced. But in this particular instance, since we're talking about traffic, the road into their development needs to be referenced.
I'm arguing his point.
I hear you.
Okay. May I address your query, please, and your comments? Geography is a reality. And the geography of Pickering Glen is its situation as it is located next to Pot House Road. All this is doing, we are, no one is disrespecting the residents of Pickering Glen. If I wanted a traffic light at Davis Road, we would not need to call everybody on Valley Forge Mountain. Okay? The point is, we are elected to try to make the best decisions that we can, to make life a little easier and better for all of you. Okay? That's what this letter is. It is a letter to Pendott to do your job and give us some money so we can all benefit, not only the school district, but every single one of us who wants to make a left-hand turn and has to wait 20 cars back because there's no turn lane. Period. That's all. So please don't get insulted for no reason. Thank you.
I'm not insulted, Barbara. I just think it's a courtesy to let the people know that you're going to include us in a letter that's a sales pitch. You want to get, you want to get this paid from Pendott, who hasn't paid a dime in 10 years.
That doesn't mean they aren't going to now, Pete.
And that's the point. The point is that...
Mr. Chairman, yeah, hold on, hold on. Mr. Chairman, is objection is to the reference to his development, correct?
Pardon me?
Your objection is the reference to the development, correct?
And the benefits that...
Well, no, let's just stick with that for a moment.
Because it hasn't been proven yet.
Okay, all right. Barbara's had a good suggestion, okay? Just take, take the development name out of there. We need, we have to reference the intersection, okay? It's all about traffic, all right? So, you know, will that answer your questions and your problems?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the bottom line.
How about if I amend my motion?
It will improve the roads, but we are not in agreement that the total benefits will benefit the community.
I, I think, I think what you said, we can take, we can take that out, but I think you're obviating the letter and you're hurting your, your, your area by taking it out.
I think, you know, you're dreaming if you don't think that...
I'm not dreaming. I'm, I'm thinking of Pickering Glen.
With a grant?
You have 48 people there.
So we get taxed either way. It doesn't matter. That's not the point. The point is you should have asked us to, that we would be included in that letter. That's, that's what the point is.
Fine. We said we would take it out. That's fine. All right. We've had, we've had the motion. The motion has been made within an amendment. It's been seconded. Do I call for the vote?
I'd like to make another amendment if I could. I don't know what the protocol here is, but we need, I think we need to make an amendment, take the, take the reference out to the...
Yeah.
Hang on. Let's have...
Okay. How about if I, how about if I restate the original motion? Okay? The motion is amended to, number one, include Pot House and Charlestown Road improvements and signaling improvements. And the second point, the second amendment is to not reference Pickering Glen by its proper name.
Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. I would like to add on to this that we had, the, our Economic Environmental Council took a walk of the Meadowbrook area today, the first, which was Monday. And three of the members of the EAC, and Dr. Fagley and Stan Johnson were there, and they had a very good conversation. They looked at the, the number of trees that are coming down, what was happening from an environmental standpoint, where they're going, how the arsenic is on the greens, and what's going to be taken care of and done. And I highly suggest that your people, you keep telling me that you don't hear this and you don't hear that. If you do, please come to our commission meetings because these things are discussed at the commission meetings. And there wasn't the, the, this part wasn't discussed at the commission meeting that they were taking a walkthrough for the Meadowbrook, but it will be discussed at the next meeting of what, what transpired. I want to open for new business, a recommendation or suggestion to the board and see what you have to, what comments you have, and I'm sure, Jim, you will have some, about the possibility of a noise ordinance and such. Donna Mostak sent us an email requesting with some good information about a noise ordinance. We do not have one. Do the, my colleagues feel that we should look into this and possibly write a noise ordinance? And what does the solicitor say on this?
I'd be happy to look into it, Fred. There are two, well, right now it's part of the nuisance ordinance. So the police are authorized to take action if there's a call about noise. They use their judgment to determine whether there's nuisance. If they believe there is, they write a citation. Some townships have gone further to be more specific about the types of noise that will be designated to violate the law. And there are some townships that go so far as to, you know, install the requirement of a decibel meter for measurement at the property line and some distance from the property line. It does get complicated, it does get expensive, and the concern that is raised by some townships who are further along the line with the scientific evaluation is that it must be applied to everyone. So, you know, there can be some unintended consequences. People who have parties or people who have barking dogs or people who have other machinery, lawn mowers, whatever. So, as like anything else, I'll be happy to look into it. There are different levels of it. There are different ordinances that are available from PSATs. We can think about it or, you know, whatever you want to do, I'm happy to do it.
Just, yeah, we sort of have a, not equivalent, but analogous ordinance in our lighting ordinance, where we go to the residential property line and measure the lumens. If it's some bright shining, sort of, light on a parking area that is just more than needed and, and violation of the lumen criteria in the ordinance. So, you know, we, we have a bit of a precedent in that regard.
A little different with noise. The light is always there. The noise has to be captured when it's, you know, during the party. But, you know...
When the dog...
There's a wide range of ordinances. We've been, I guess I'll editorialize, in a small, sleepy township for decades. It's a time, it's up to you to decide that we should do it, but bear in mind, there are consequences. The police may be running around a lot, a lot of citations of people who are in favor of it, which happens sometimes.
Was there something driving, the request for a noise ordinance?
I'm sorry?
Something driving in the request for a noise ordinance that isn't covered under the nuisance?
He's out of order, Fred. He is out of order.
No, my, my question was, was, what was, what's driving the noise ordinance?
The request for it. What type of noise other than that's not covered under the nuisance or...
We don't have an ordinance.
We don't have a noise ordinance.
Come to the podium if you have a question, please.
I would just, I need clarification. What was driving, I thought there was a nuisance at the...
We have a noise ordinance. We have a resident request if the board would look into it.
We had a written letter to us from a resident. Okay?
Oh, I meant the difference with what a noise meant.
We don't know. That's, that's the kicker.
That's what we have to discuss.
You have two dogs on your property, and they bark all the time. You can be, depending on the noise ordinance that's put in, you could be cited for those dogs barking because it's a noise ordinance. It's, you, we got to really look at what we're, if we're going to put a noise ordinance in.
Exactly.
I thought there was something in place, so...
Yeah, no, there's none. There's a nuisance ordinance.
There's a nuisance ordinance that references noise. What the request is, is to have a noise ordinance, not just a nuisance ordinance.
Thank you.
John Maraz of Meadowbrook Lane. I think one of the questions about the noise ordinance came from the school board when they're looking to develop the Meadowbrook golf course with the six playing fields. At that time, they're talking about having sound systems. And at one of the school board meetings we attended, they didn't realize that the school township did not have a noise ordinance. And they even said they should act upon that because there is nothing on your books other than barking dogs. So that's where it's coming from. So the suspected sound systems that the school board is planning to put out there on six playing fields is the reason why we're asking for this right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
For moving late, Meadowbrook Lane. As John mentioned, you know, the sound system is obviously a concern, potential sound system. But also, we're going to be looking at a lot of construction going on, too. And those townships with their ordinances at least have a time, you know, like no noise or construction so forth before 7:00 AM.
We have that. We have that. That ordinance is in place for that.
For noise?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
It's for construction activity.
Yeah, for construction activity. And, and backup beepers in particular.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm willing to work with our solicitor on this and come up with some kind of a draft and...
All right, we're going to work on it. Okay. Did my colleagues agree that we should take a look at this and see how it would...
If you want to spend your time, I, I think at this point...
Go ahead.
It's, I'm not sure it's needed at this particular time, but I applaud your willingness to volunteer to look into it, Jim.
I would like to make a recommendation. I think, not for just Meadowbrook Lane, but I think it would make sense, not realizing that there is not a noise ordinance on the books for the township, which could apply to various things, not just Meadowbrook, but in developments and all that, that if we have parties or the dog ordinance or any, any type of noise, that I think there should be some order, some type of noise restriction that, you know, you can go back to and have a position to stand on to, I mean, right now you're saying that anybody could be making noises other than trying to define it as a nuisance. There's no noise. That seems...
One of the things we can look into, fortunately, the computer world is helping us, is doing a search on those municipalities that have General Code, is their codeifying company, starting with Chester County, of which there are about 20 or so, and then working our way around the greater Philadelphia area, just to see what's out there.
Yeah, I imagine does Phoenixville, anyway, Phoenixville have a...
No.
No, nobody?
Not that I know of.
No, I think, I thought we covered that.
I just bring up an analogy, though. What if you have a 17- or 15-year-old youngster, and they're washing your car for you, and they turn that radio up as loud as they can and everything? You want the police to come by and pick, pick them up? Or what if you, there's five or six kids in your yard, and there's an old man like me who say, and they're making too much noise. Do we call the police and say, come and calm this down? I mean, there's a lot to look into. What we've said, we will look into it, and we'll see what we can transpire, what we have to do for it. Okay? We will look to see if a noise ordinance...
I'm not challenging anyone. I don't understand why that...
No, no.
You're asking people to come up and participate in these conversations.
No, 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 no.
I think this is a good idea, and all of a sudden I'm getting...
No, 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 no. But I would just think...
I understand there's a lot of potential issues with it, but...
Because even a year ago, a person in back of me, of where I live, a person in back of her had two dogs that barked all the time. And she wanted us to look into it. Well, we didn't have a noise ordinance, if you remember correctly. And however, the man decided he didn't like her, so he put up two signs with the word "F-U" there. And her grandkids came up and saw it. So we don't have a noise ordinance. We couldn't, and he would put the dogs out religiously to bark and perturbed other people in the yard. But we didn't have a noise ordinance, so what do we do? So we had to...
He was going to look into it.
But we're going to look into it, though.
No, I think it's a, it should be looked into.
All right, go ahead.
Not a much, Meadowbrook Lane. Thank you very much for reading my email. I appreciate the conversation. This is what I was hoping for tonight. I would hope that everyone is interested in looking into this, not just from the standpoint of a PA system, which we are certainly very interested in, but for the entire township. We have grown. We are not the small city place that we used to be. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Donna.
I have a comment relative to the school district. The school district has already filed their preliminary plan. Am I correct on, I'm positive about that.
Yes, I have.
They've already filed their preliminary plan. Okay. So the way that state law reads is, is you cannot post facto pass an ordinance to effect a filing of a preliminary plan. It's already on the books.
That's right.
So, so this would have to, this noise ordinance would have to apply to, in general, the residential activities, but in terms of developments, in terms of developments in the future developments, okay? As opposed to the one that's been, been prepared for us.
That's your.
Shame on the township supervisors who have not studied a noise ordinance. As Donna mentioned, this is the entire township. Shame on you for not even acting.
Do you come up to the podium?
You talk about historical places, historical things. The neighbors in that area, if this plan goes through as it is shown on the preliminary plan, Jim, do you want to live right by there with speakers?
We are here.
So if you want an ordinance, or you look at one, you're telling us they are not going to be, you won't have a by-bye, correct?
We can't force.
How convenient.
We can't, we can't, to my knowledge now, and Bill can confirm this or not, but to my knowledge, we can't pass an ordinance that directly affects their preliminary plan since it's already been filed, okay? Maybe there's something else we can do to beef up our nuisance ordinance. You know, it's a sort of a gray area.
Well, Jim, the school board.
May I address this? You know, John, there is something called rational, objective discussion. And in having a discussion with the school district, their plan has already been filed. That's, that's a fact. But the, but the final plan has not been formalized.
That's correct.
So we can have positive, objective conversations, and there's something called compromise that may be discussed without going off on a limb and making our own school district a villain.
And we're not talking about being a villain. I'm saying at a school board meeting, they mentioned to us that the school township did not have a noise ordinance. We didn't know that. The school board knew it, so they knew this already. That's what I'm saying. And we've been, we're bringing to the township here that the township should have had something on the books. So that's what we're doing right here now. And I'm sorry to say that if the plan hasn't been approved, we know that hasn't been approved yet, but the plan showed six playing fields with possible speakers. Thank you.
I think we should move forward. Okay. All right, let's move forward.
We did anticipate a comment, Barbara, where, you know, if the plans had already been filed, like, you know, they're protected, so to speak. We did inquire about such a thing and we were told the exact opposite, Mr. Morrison, that you were saying that they can be held accountable for noise violence, noise ordinance.
Can I jump in there and try to respond to Attorney Morrison's comments? I think he was referring to the zoning principle, which is that if a plan is filed, none of the law changes. The, that doesn't mean that the developer has to abide by the law.
I want to move forward.
There is something called ex post facto law, which means that this board cannot pass an ordinance that is specifically directed to one person or one thing.
Yes.
So they can't, for example, pass an ordinance that's directly related to speakers of a certain size that might be installed in a certain, on a certain street in the township, right? Generally speaking, the noise ordinance, if it's valid, and I'm not giving free advice here, but it might and probably would be appropriate to be enforced throughout the township. Depends, there is nuance here, and I'm not, you know, but it may or may not be. It depends on the language, okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's move forward. Oh, oops. Thank you, Josh.
I know you want to move forward, but Josh will, school township president and also on the municipal school board. Just want to note, the preliminary plans that we submitted don't include a PA system. So one fact there, now we certainly have said that it's possible. It's not something that's been decided. It will get decided at building and grounds committee meetings and at school board meetings, and we look forward to the discussion that happens there on whether or not to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
All right, let's move forward. Meeting, the next item of business is resolution and ordinance. A resolution 2014-14 to approve consolidating of amendments and restating the deferred group 457 plan and adding the ability for employees to apply for loans from the individual 457 plans.
So moved.
Here, a second.
Second.
Just a general question on this. This is the retirement plan for the.
No, it is not.
No?
It's a deferred compensation plan that these individual employees may get into. The township facilitates the paperwork to do this. The township has no way puts money into this. It's all employee money as payroll and ownership into their individual account.
Okay, so it's like a sort of a savings account?
For individual employees, yes.
Yeah. They're deferring their comp to future, and then they want to take loans out on it, which is fine.
So there's no outlay of money by the township. We just, township is there to facilitate this for the employees.
No additional risk.
But there's no fiscal outlay on the part of the township?
No.
Or fiscal responsibility?
No, no risks.
Okay.
One more question. What prompted this consolidation in this?
Well, we had moved from Delaware Services to expert plan. Delaware Services decided not to deal with working for someone anymore. So moving to expert plan, it was amendment to get it over there. So that contributed to the other amendments that we have with Delaware Services over here. So this just consolidates everything and then adds that line that employees may take loans if they so choose to use the expert plan first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I heard the motion. I've had the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? So moved. Next item is subdivision land development. Consideration of waiver requests for Valley Forge Meadows Nolan property, Nolan, proposed apartment complex, possible action on preliminary plan. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Well, I'd just like to make, say something on this, if I could. Sort of summarize the situation as I understand it. Valley Forge Meadows Company Incorporated has filed a development plan for a property, a thirty-acre property on Paulings Road to build seventy-two apartment buildings, seventy-two apartment units, nine buildings. And in the filing, they recognized that they needed to get, basically, they needed to get eleven waivers from the township to basically achieve this plan and develop. So far, it appears, as far as I'm aware, that we have an agreement that amongst us, at least, I think.
Just a minute, there are no agreements.
No agreements, no agreements, okay. Let's put it this way. There are eleven waivers requested and.
State denied waivers.
And nine waivers are pretty much uncontested, at least by some of our committees.
Yeah, all but four and nine.
Yeah. All right, so, but that leaves two of them. And one involves a requirement for a sidewalk, in this case, along Paulings Road. Another one involves the requirement for granite curbing within the development. And I would propose that we approve the nine, but modify the last two. And the modifications are that the sidewalk, in Louisville sidewalk, there'd be a paved pathway paralleling Paulings Road roughly, ADA compatible, six feet wide, connecting the entrance driveway to the sidewalk terminus of Revolutionary Boulevard. And in fact, Mr. Nolan and I and our township engineer and our chair of our EAC, we scattered out this possibility a couple of weeks ago. And it looks feasible. Okay, so that's the substitution of the pathway for the sidewalk. Relative to the granite curbing.
So Jim, you want to take twenty-five feet out of Paulings Road, cut down all the trees that are there, backfill that whole land, make Nolan build a wall to support the pathway?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, yeah.
No, 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 no. We did it.
We had this discussion, Jim. It's a simple discussion.
You're confusing, I think, Evan, the sidewalk that was discussed with a pathway that is further into the wooded area, which actually gets to be primarily on level ground and in fact, takes advantage of some unauthorized ATV trails in there where nothing has to be cut, okay? And then works its way back up, minimal tree removal, believe me. It works its way back up to Paulings Road.
Why are you worried about the sidewalk? Why are you worried about paths? Why is that your main issue? Why is that? I mean, Mr. Nolan already told you that he doesn't want it connected to the Meadows of Valley Forge. He doesn't want to put a path in that connects the apartment complex to the Meadows of Valley Forge.
I have not heard that from Mr. Nolan.
And then you have the residents here of the Meadows of Valley Forge who are telling you they don't want it connected, the apartment complex, to the Meadows of Valley Forge. So my mentality is give him all his waivers for the grants and let him go on and do his business. I mean, you're driving a man nuts.
They, I.
No, otherwise you're off today.
Over the simplest little things because you want to put a sidewalk in through the whole township. Do it on your side. Do it on Valley Park Road. Start at your house and start the sidewalk over there, and let's see where it goes. I mean, it's a simple little fact.
That has nothing to do with it.
It does have something to do with it.
No, it doesn't.
It does.
Can I interject a word?
This is, first of all, this is not.
One at a time, please. Barbara?
This is a discussion, okay?
Jim, just a minute, please. Barbara?
Yes. Having listened carefully and having been one of those who developed the Schuylkill River Trail from nineteen ninety to the year two thousand, I am strongly in favor of trails. However, however, I respect the privacy of those in the meadows. But I really do think an easement is something different than a trail. And with all due respect, Mr. Nolan, I, if I were going to rent an apartment in your complex, I would be more likely to rent an apartment if I had the ability to walk a feasibly done trail within that, within that development. So I would like to, wait, I wish people would.
Hang on, let her finish, please.
Talk out of turn. I'm trying to suggest that the privacy of the meadows that's being requested is respected. On the other hand, Bill, my query to you is, can we, can we vote to give Mr. Nolan a waiver but not give him that waiver with the idea of not putting in a sidewalk? And not, you and I had that discussion in the act me last week. The idea is to have the residents of your apartment complex have something that will benefit them within your, within Mr. Nolan's property.
Okay, Jim, you're up.
Okay. I think I've pretty much stated the wording, not exactly, but the gist of the wording for this. I want to finish my discussion here, okay? So I stated about the pathway. The other thing is about the granite curbing. It's very simple in my mind. It would enhance the, I think, the look of the place and also the practical advantage, which you all have in your development. You've got seven miles of granite curbing, okay? All I'm asking is that we substitute the requirement for all granite curbing in this new development for just a straightaway section from the right away to the beginning of the parking area, both sides. And I think, I hope that Mr. Nolan's in agreement with that. That would be in lieu of requiring granite curbing for the whole place.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I want to ask one question. You mentioned a comment that, I wonder if you said that Mr. Nolan wanted to build the path?
No, 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 no. He has, he has not, to my hearing, has not taken a position.
I'll share the podium.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on. You asked me a question and you're not directing this meeting. The chair is, okay? Now, he is really, in fairness to Mr. Nolan, is not, from my understanding, really taking a position on this. He was helpful in, and our township engineer, myself, and our EAC chair was helpful in guiding us in a certain direction along Paulings Road so that we could figure out if a pathway was feasible, all right? With that, taking down a minimal number of trees, and the trees coming down would be maybe like that. So he helped us do that. I'm hoping he'll take the next step and accept the proposal of an alternate sidewalk pathway.
Okay.
Greg, can I just comment briefly? As I understand it, the only two issues outstanding have to do with those two waivers, the sidewalks and this pathway and the granite curbing. I've submitted to you a draft resolution which contains.
You did.
Eighteen points.
October sixth.
They're not controversial. I've discussed them with council, Mr. Snyder. So the only thing in my mind is, is a determination of whether the two requests that have been made should be granted yes or no. But to answer your question, Barbara, the law says that the sidewalk is required and there's a request for a waiver of that. There's no way to impose the walking path unless Mr. Nolan agrees to do so. But then on the other hand, you don't have to waive the sidewalk. So it's, there is room for negotiation here and compromise or just a decision one way or the other. So that's, that's where we are.
I guess my.
Just one other point. We've decided, subject to your review, Mr. Nolan, we haven't decided yet. Mr. Snyder and I have discussed the possibility of just taking the conservation easement out of all of this for another day and focusing solely on the application for approval of the preliminary plan. And the only two issues out there are the sidewalk and the curb. So with that.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I think we should hear from Mr. Nolan or his engineer.
We will in just a minute. If you just let me handle the meeting, I will.
I just had a further question for you, Bill.
Hang on for a minute. Do you have any more questions for Bill?
I do.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So my question is, if we grant eleven waivers as opposed to nine, can we still ask Mr. Nolan to put in, I'll call it, an interior trail for the residents of his development?
You can ask. He doesn't have to do it.
Okay, so therefore, I don't want to grant all the waivers. I'd like a modified trail design within your property to be part of your development because I think it's a positive amenity that can and should be provided, especially since there's a piece of the Schuylkill River Trail just across the bridge.
A trail isn't one of the part of the waivers. Under the eleven waivers, the trail is not part of that.
The trail is not something that is required by the SALDO. The sidewalk is.
That's correct.
Okay.
So it's not unusual for there to be discussions, negotiations with the developer where you say, "Well, if the trail is a lot less expensive to build, will you agree to a condition to build the trail in exchange for the waiver"? Now, it's hard to do this in public, but the law requires it because we're not allowed to meet more than two people in that regard. And I don't know what your sense is about that, so.
Let me just make a comment on this. The word trail has been used here. I'd rather use the word walking path or pathway, okay? Trail to me has some implications of deviating from the main road and circumnavigating the interior of the property and, you know, all that stuff. This is not that, okay? This is about as close to the road as you could practically be and still have a connection between point A and point B.
Fine.
And, and it's ADA compatible, which means it has to be paved. It has to be at least five feet wide. And as Pittsburgh residents know, theirs is six feet wide and for a reason because it offers.
Two wheelchairs have to pass.
More maneuver room for walkers and so.
However, I think at our last meeting, our last BOs meeting, the board decided not to have a trail whatsoever.
No, we didn't. I'm sorry, we did not.
I think we did.
No, we made no decision.
We tabled it.
We tabled it.
But we, we, more or less, we had a consensus, though.
We had a consensus to conserve their privacy. No, that's not true.
Well, I don't believe in the trail.
Okay, so we have a respectful difference of opinion.
That's true.
I think the residents of Mr. Nolan's apartment complex should have a trail within that complex. And it would not intrude, excuse me.
Hey, you're out of order, sir.
Fred, he's out of order. I was, what I was trying to say was.
You're up.
Respecting the privacy of the meadows. That's all I was trying to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, the concern that I have right now is a six-foot wide, which is a bike path, is what you're putting in, or?
No, it has to be a minimum of eight.
Oh, so what is?
Minimum of eight feet to be a multi-use trail. That's, that in fact, that would encompass a bike, okay? You can't have bikes on this six-foot wide path.
Exactly. This is a walking path, a multi-use trail. It has to be ten feet wide to be handicapped.
I've heard from expert engineers on this.
Okay, too many people are talking. Let him finish.
This, this trail is through, this trail is through the potential conservation easement land, right?
We have not determined that at all. That conservation easement is not part of the discussion. I am discussing the concept with the developer here. The idea of giving the residents of that apartment complex an interior walking path as an amenity. that apartment complex an interior walking path as an amenity to his development. Period, end.
But you were, Mr. Martin, you were mentioning it hooking up to the sidewalk in front of the meadows, Paulings Road.
And I'm not.
Okay. Well, okay, what's one you do, because one is going through a conservation easement.
Well, wait a minute. Let's, let's, let's table the conservation easement thing for the moment. Let's look at it in terms of the 10 acres that he's proposed for the nine buildings, okay? That's the building area.
Which, which would stop roughly, what, a couple hundred yards from Ferry Lane?
That's right.
I don't know for z, for sure, but.
That is right.
Mr. Nolan may know. Anyway.
Okay. To say, to argument's sake, 200 yards from Ferry Lane up towards.
For, for argument's sake. And then, then the other part of the property is this 19 acres that sort of does a horseshoe around this, the 10, okay? The idea that I, that I've proposed here is in lieu of a sidewalk, which would go from the, the building area through, from the entrance westward through the building area, then through the, the 19-acre area to connect to sidewalk terminus from Revolution Boulevard. Instead of that, have a paved pathway, which is, is a, it really provides a nicer walk. Uh, it's, 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 it's a, it's definitely a pleasanter experience than, than walking right next to the, the, the cartway of Paulings Road under inclement conditions, okay? So, uh, that's, that's, that's really one of the major benefits.
Through, through the conservation easement. Potential conservation.
The 19 acres.
Right.
Potential conservation.
That's a.
To connect to the meadows.
But that's what I'm trying to understand. So this would be, you know, work its way through.
Right.
Now, this is conservation on developable land, right? That.
Not yet.
No.
I'm saying, potential.
No, no, no. Let me, let me clarify that.
What would be the?
A, a conservation easement can be on totally open land, okay, with no buildings on it. It could be on land with five buildings on it, as long as you define that the open space areas around those buildings.
Now, was this, is this land then, once, if this is done, say, the easement on, whose property is that land?
The conservation easement, in a conservation easement, the, the landowner retains ownership, okay, of the land. What he, what he or she or it loses in terms of a corporate entity is the ability, is it, the, the, the development light rights are restricted to a very, very minimum amount of development. Uh, and that's all, that wording is all crafted in the conservation easement language, okay? So that's, that's it. I mean, there's no change of ownership. It's just a restriction in the use.
What you have, what you have is two, two parcels. He already owns the 30 acres, but there's two parcels, there are 19.2 and 10.96. The 10.96 is where he plans on building nine buildings. The, the 19.2 is the possible conservation easement, okay? That's where it is. But if you have something that's near the housing development, somebody's going to go over that fence or over that wall to start it if there's a trail. I mean, there's no question about it.
Well, that's what I mean. If you're mentioning that, you know, would we like to hook up to the, the Schuylkill Trail, whatever, which is on the other side of the train tracks, which was what you were referencing, that, right, that it was, it was, it would be connecting or the ability?
No, no, not going in that direction at all.
No.
I thought you mentioned that the, the.
No, 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 no.
No, no.
Again, starting from the driveway entrance, which is opposite, planned driveway entrance, which is opposite Ferry Lane. Look at that. And if you're looking at that from Ferry Lane, you're looking north, okay? So the west side of that driveway entrance would be the starting point and, and it wouldn't necessarily be right close to the road either, okay? And then work its way, work its way into the, within the right-of-way until you get out of the building area, then down just a little bit where the, the ground is more level and you don't have to cut trees down, and then finally work your way back up and, and get to.
Is that designed just then for the residents of the apartment complex?
Oh, wait. That, that is what, that is, I assure you, as I told you when we met by coincidence, that I respect your right to privacy in your development, okay? On the other hand, on the other hand, there are many developments that have occurred in Schuylkill Township where conservation easement does not equal a trail for those residents. And therefore, I would respectfully require Mr. Nolan to put that amenity in for those who will live in those apartments.
Only with a vote from the BOs.
That is my only op, that is my opinion.
Okay, all right. Now, I would like to give Mr. Nolan a chance to get up.
Mr. Brennan, is it possible to take the Fifth Amendment? We're tending a lot. Just so the chronology is correct, we did ask for a waiver not to put the sidewalk in and not to put the curb.
That's right.
So that's, that's where we start.
Right.
And the reason for that was nothing more than why destroy all those trees? We're going to have a big conservation plot of ground of almost 20 acres. Let's just leave it in its natural state. We were then asked to do a trail system. And that kind of got out of hand, I thought, but the township was requesting it. That's water over the dam. What I have now been asked to do is to foot a walking path, I think, a trail, I think, a bike path, I think.
No. Just a walking, a walking path.
Well, when, when the trail system started.
That could be just two feet wide.
When the trail system started and I was asked by the, the Open Space Committee and the Natural Lands Trust, it was basically a walking trail through the woods, dirt trail, a bird, you know, people could go watch the birds and stuff like that. But now we've come back down to, um, painting this trail.
In lieu of a sidewalk.
Huh?
In lieu of a sidewalk.
In lieu of a sidewalk. So as a developer, I'm, I'm faced with a decision. Do I have the township force me to put the curb and sidewalk in or shall I do what they want, which is the trail? As long as it's the trail that you walked the other day, it's basically taking the sidewalk off of Paulings Road and putting it 30 or 40 feet into the woods. So building a trail in the woods, to me, cost-wise or whatever, is not a whole lot different than doing the sidewalk. And by the way, I don't have to do the curb. So that's a plus for me. The problem that I'm now having is what I thought was going to be a walking trail and okay, maybe we went and we stoned it and it was four feet wide so that people could walk from the meadows of Valley Forge to get to this wonderful trail system that's along the river that goes for, I don't know, 60 or 70 miles, that is.
67.
That people bike, they do all sorts of nice things. They have a huge parking lot out there that would hold 100 cars for people to drive there and do this trail. So I'm thinking that the township is wanting to get the people at the meadows to be able to walk down to, uh, this wonderful trail, that what I'm building is not in competition with the Montgomery County Trail System. When we get into six-foot paved, I'm saying to myself, whoa, major liability. Kid doesn't wear a helmet, he falls down, he's brain injured. I'm a private individual. I'm not a county, I'm not a township. I can be sued. I know all about the Pennsylvania ordinances that say, you know, if you've got a recreation thing, they can't touch you alone. You can spend $25,000 proving that that's the case.
Well, in your mind, excuse me, in, in your mind, would, would that also be true for a sidewalk along Paulings?
No, I don't see that. That, that, you know, you're going to walk on. When you start talking, doing six foot, six-foot wide paved, I guarantee you those mini bikes are going to go flying there.
You bet.
And the problem is.
Without a question.
If they get to Paulings Road at Ferry, they damn well better stop. Because if they don't, and even a biker, if he gets biking and gets up to, to Paulings Road at Ferry, he's either going to get himself killed or he's going to cause an accident.
That's right.
And then where does he go when he gets there? He's got to go down Paulings Road, which is, either he gets killed or there's an accident.
Under the bridge.
Goes down through the bridge, goes over the river. You people want it. So I just want, all I want is off the liability. So I would ask, and I haven't, I haven't talked to council about this, I'd like to get some sort of a waiver from you people that I'm not liable for this because I see this as very dangerous. A four-foot walking path, similar to a, a concrete sidewalk, a four-foot stone walking path, I have a problem with you. No bikers are going to get, they're going to walk their bike down to this wonderful 60-mile path on the river. They're going to walk through the woods to get to it. They're not going to be pedaling, see how fast they can get, and then not be able to stop when they get to Paulings Road. So my whole thing right now is liability. I think we're asking for it. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that I didn't ask for it.
May I ask you, so, I, I was not aware of this being paved until this evening, okay? I had always assumed it was a walking path within your apartment complex as an amenity to your apartment dwellers.
And I always assumed it was for the meadows of Valley Forge, trying to get them down.
Well, obviously, the meadow, the folks at the meadows do not want to be associated with this, unfortunately. But that's their decision.
And.
What I'm asking you as the key person here is, in terms of granting the waivers, whether it's nine or 11, what, if I, if I vote to grant a waiver, does that mean you're not going to put in a trail? I'd like to see an interior trail within your apartment complex.
Are you talking about the trail that you?
No, I'm talking about a four-foot wide and, John, we can talk about materials other than a paved surface that would not encourage the kind of dangerous bike riders that you're talking about.
My main concern is.
I don't think that's supposed to be, come up as a vote for tonight anyhow.
Well, let me just.
Because there's two things, hang on for just a minute, Bill. I wanted to come back at you anyhow. We're wrapping ourselves around the flagpole, number one. Number two, uh, I think it's going to end up with a two versus two vote. And if that's the case, we're going to have to table there.
You need three, right?
Excuse me?
Under government work, you need three.
I understand that. I said, though, it looks to me, though, it will end up as a two versus two vote.
Well, how do you know?
You don't know that, but I happen to be as chairman, I think I do know that. Okay. So, question.
Can we approve the nine tonight?
No.
Why not?
Well, just a moment.
Now, now, now we go on what you have to say, what?
Well, it was a question, can you approve the nine? You could do that tonight without taking a formal vote on the, on the plan. Or there can, the way this is done normally, there's a motion and if it dies for lack of a second, it's gone. If there's another motion and it's seconded, you keep doing that until you come to something that you vote on and get three votes. If it doesn't happen.
Well, I understand the three votes.
All right, then, then, then we, then we, uh, then we caucus or you do what you have to do. But the only way you can act is by passing a vote.
Do you want to make a motion?
I would, I would suggest, and you can react to this, Bill, but I would suggest that we approve the nine.
Instead of, you want to make a motion?
We table it.
All right, good thinking.
Because we don't have a fifth member here.
Well, that's, that's one, uh, small step toward resolving this. Uh, it would mean it's on the agenda again in January for resolution. We might even be able to resolve one of the other problems, which is, uh, I understand it's possible that Mr. Nolan will agree to the granted curbing compromise which was suggested, which is from the property line to the beginning of the parking lot. Is that correct?
I agree with you, without, without the curbing and without the sidewalk, just, just go the nine, the nine waivers.
So we might make some progress to see.
Because we've, we've got to move him along somewhere. We're just holding. Well, what we're doing, we're holding Mr. Nolan up an awful lot and I, I think.
Let, let Phil finish.
However, uh, I would make a motion that we accept nine of the 11 waivers.
I'll second that.
With the exception of the sidewalk and with the exception of the curbs tonight.
I, I second your motion to treat the nine waivers and table a decision this evening on the other two, pending a compromise.
Do I have any discussion on that?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Bill. I, Jim, you've got to speak up here on the granted, the granted curbing. I, you, you've done seven miles of granite curbing in the meadows of Valley Forge.
Oh, I already told him to do the granite curb.
Yeah, oh, okay, okay, all right. So, so.
I mean, what we're talking about is you can't have granite curb on the right-of-way of Paulings Road.
Right.
So I've got to do concrete along Paulings Road.
Right.
I've got to take the radius into the development and the minute it gets straight, I'm going to do granite curb down to where it's going to turn again.
Thought we were just going to do?
Yeah, yeah.
So that'll, then that'll go back to concrete.
Yeah, yeah.
It solves one problem, Fred. It leaves us just with the trail problem. So we can make those small steps this evening.
Right.
And see if we can resolve the, the balance of it, which is the trail or the sidewalk at the next meeting.
That's correct. Do I hear a second on that?
I did second your motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved.
No.
Thank you. One big step for mankind.
That's what I thought. One big step for mankind.
Thank you for your patience.
Very sorry, Mr. Nolan. All right, we have, uh.
One last thing.
Thank you, colleagues.
Fred, we have one last thing to.
I know that, I haven't finished. So hang on, dear. Please.
Well, there's some people here for public participation with the tower.
All right, hang on. I'll have public participation in just a minute.
So, so explain to me what, since we did, since you granted the variance except for the sidewalk.
There are waivers.
Waivers, but are we going to bring the motion back up in January for it?
Yes, on, on the, on the sidewalk issue.
That's the only thing left.
Right, okay. All right. The last item on the agenda is a motion to approve the preliminary final plan approval for the Shirley Vogel lot line revision at 23 to 25 Oakwood Lane.
I'll make the motion.
I'll, I'll second it, but I have a.
Now explain it.
The motion's been made and the second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a question for John. John, in your, in your, in your letter.
Yes.
I was a little confused by the last sentence. You concluded your review of the final subdivision plan in this case, recommend Schuylkill Township, recommend that Schuylkill Township consider granting final plan approval for the subject application contingent on the applicant addressing the issue outlined herein. Now, I don't know what the issue is.
It's, uh, it's the last comment under general comments, uh, just that the plan and the legal description should be signed and sealed by a professional plan surveyor.
Ah, okay, okay. That's it.
I'm sure.
I'm Glenn Kelchesky with Berstig and Smith, representing Shirley Vogel.
Could you speak up just a bit?
Yes, I'm Glenn Kelchesky with Berstig and Smith. I'm here representing Shirley Vogel. We have no problem with finding a plan, preparing a legal description before recording.
I just had one question about this. We have, uh, two lots and you're moving the lot line in a way that makes the one lot with the two houses smaller. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, I think, I think both lots have moldy glows on them.
This dashed line gets eradicated and then this is the new lot.
All right, but this, this is where it is now.
That's, that's correct.
My point is that on this lot, there are two houses. Are they owned by the same people? I mean, is one rented or?
Yes.
How do we end up with two houses on one lot?
I'm going to answer that one, but it's, it's.
Depends on the date of the house and.
Yeah, all, all the houses are existing non-conform. All the houses are existing non-conformities.
Are there, are there two houses on this lot as well?
No.
All right, but just as, all right, so having two houses on one lot is the non-conformities, correct?
Yeah.
So, in one sense, and I talked to Mary, who about this, the lot with the two houses is getting smaller, right? So, does that mean that, you know, you're making a bad situation worse?
Well, we look at it that way, but the way we're looking at it is that it actually gets the property line right off of their existing barn, and also allows their driveway to be entirely within their property, that's, that's what I mean.
We, we don't look, we look at it the same way that Glenn has described.
Are you comfortable with this, John?
Yes, because the lot is still conforms with all of the ordinance requirements except for where this lot has existing non-conformities, which can't be rectified by what they're proposing to do, and it doesn't make those existing non-conformities any worse.
Okay. Where is, where is this address of the 23?
Oakwood, right next to that, what's that development, Independence?
Freedom, Freedom View.
Freedom View.
States.
It's on Oakwood, next to Freedom View.
Okay.
Where the dog leg is on Oakwood Lane in the access.
All right, folks, I've had the motion, I've had the second. Is there any more discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
I would like to ask a question before I go. Is a Mr. Urie here tonight? You, I read your email, so, I mean, I want to let you know. I understand what you're talking about, by the way. Mr. Urie wrote quite an email about Cleona Avenue, about the concern about Route 23, the, all the traffic is going through his area and such that we have. Did everybody get that email and read it?
They did.
Yes.
I already had a discussion.
Yes.
With the lieutenant today.
Great.
About having extra cars on there.
But I wanted to let you know that we had read it and would take it under advisement.
How long is each tour expected to last? Do we know?
It's Aqua, once they get done tearing up.
Mary, do you have any idea?
When they're done.
I hate to put it that way, but it's rather repetitive.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, yeah, thank you. Thank you for all reading that, and since I'm on break between projects, I've been working from home during this period and have been getting an eye for the last few days, the 18-wheelers and the concrete trucks doing 40-plus miles an hour. First of all, the police have been there, I guess, before this all started. They were there pretty frequently because we have some new neighbors with children who are very, as you probably are aware, are very adamant and, and about that, but I, I don't know what can be done because I don't know what Penn Dot goofball decided sending all that traffic up a residential street was a great idea, when the westbound one goes down White Horse and a Pothouse, which isn't great, but it makes a lot more sense. I don't know, I, I know it takes Penn Dot five years to go to the bathroom, so there's nothing that can be done there. I don't know if you can make Penn Dot or Aqua or whomever put up those signs that, you know, radar signs that put up their speed limit. I'm not asking the police to run around and, you know, ticket everybody that goes up and down there because it's just, you know, they, they can't, they can't do that. We don't have enough manpower for that. But anything you can do that'll help because, you know, I saw a truck go through that big puddle, the canal came at about 40 miles an hour.
Wow.
Some kids coming home from school are going to get wiped out at some rate.
We have, thank you for giving us that, we're, we're on it.
All right, I appreciate it.
I think, Mr. Urie, you happen to be an engineer?
Uh, I'm an engineer by training, yes. I'm not, I'm not practicing these days.
I, I believe that that street is less than our standard width. It's, it's not 32 feet, the carway is not 32 feet, right?
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly not a, it's certainly not equipped to handle a state highway volume, but that means I'm going to lose 20 feet of my land.
Thank you.
Don't do that. Thank you.
Anything, any more in two-minute reports? Anything in additional business? All right, when I ask for public participation, before I have Mr. Keller come up and give him his.
There's people here.
Just a minute, hang on, just a minute, please. I stall. Go ahead. Yes.
Captain Moran.
He, he.
I'm sorry, I thought you were looking at me, Fred.
No, we were looking at the lady in the back.
And Fred, I would beg your indulgence and the rest of the board to hear me out before you respond. As a matter of public importance and interest, I want to ask several questions relating to the proposed Early Learning Center project, and afterwards I'll sit down and listen to your comments. From the Butera firm website, it seems that the solicitor for the Board of Supervisors is a partner at the same law firm as a member of the school board. Is this correct? Does this create either a potential conflict of interest or an actual conflict of interest? Has the township solicitor advised the township supervisors of any potential or actual conflict of interest? And if so, what was the potential or actual conflict? When and how were they notified? Has the Board of Supervisors waived in writing any potential or actual conflict of interest? If so, how and when? Has the Board of Supervisors considered whether this situation I described creates either the potential for an actual conflict of interest? Has this issue been discussed in open meetings or during executive sessions of the Board of Supervisors? Has this issue been discussed between the Board of Supervisors and any representatives of the school board? Was it ever publicly disclosed that the solicitor for the Board of Supervisors is a partner at the same law firm as a member of the school board? If there is or was a potential for an actual conflict of interest, as I've just described, does that potentially affect the validity of any of the action, vote, or decision taken or made by the township supervisors and/or the school district involving the Early Learning Center project? Do you know if the Butera law firm represents any person or entity involved in any way in the planning or the construction of the Early Learning Project? Pending review of these issues, should all action votes or decisions regarding the proposed Early Learning Center project be put on hold? I thank you, and I'll sit down for your response.
All right, I will respond.
Hang on for just a minute. First of all, the majority of those items that you've talked about are pointed towards me, since I was a school board director for 12 years, and.
They're corrected.
Hang, hang on, please, hang on, please. Let me answer first. Thank you. It's been eight years since I've been off the school board. I would ask legality-wise, how long do I have to be off to where I abstain or I don't abstain? I did abstain to the PFC motion, okay? So, I have taken it into consideration for, because of a comment made by your people saying that I had a conflict of interest. I don't have a conflict of interest. I know what is best for the school district and what is best for our children of where we're going and go to school and the land, as far as I'm concerned, so, Bill?
If I may, Fred, I'm the township solicitor, I provide legal advice, I don't vote, I'm not an elected official, I perform, as I said, legal services, and I've been here since 2008. Partner of mine is on the school board, I'm not sure how many members they have, that does not constitute a conflict of interest of any kind. There's no ethical violation, there's no conflict of interest. If you seek to proceed in that way, you're free to do so, I don't care. I am surprised by your desperation, I didn't realize you'd stoop to this sort of thing.
That's right, desperation.
But I'll deal with it. I will note that there's no free pass for defamatory comments simply because they're made at a public meeting, and if you make false accusations about my ethics or about whether there is a conflict of interest, you open the door to a response. So, I'm perfectly comfortable with my position as solicitor and with having, with having a partner who is on the school board. That's not a secret, everybody knows that, and if you think it's a problem, you're free to do whatever you like, but actions have consequences. That's all I have to say.
I have a postscript. I'd like to end this discussion with a bit of humor and transparency. In the 1980s, I taught Josh Gould Sunday School at the N. Jacob synagogue, and there is no conflict of interest.
Any, any other comments? Were, the majority are questions answered?
I accept the responses, it wasn't directed to you, Mr. Perry.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I don't consider it, I don't consider it as stooping. When I reviewed the website to get more understanding of who the players were on the school board, I saw your face, and I naturally thought, could this possibly be a conflict? It was not stooping.
Well, I'm sure you.
It was in my best interest, and no defamatory remarks were made. I simply asked questions.
Well, I think you owe me an apology.
Which is my right.
I think you owe me an apology, but I'll leave it at that.
No, sir, I do not, I was asking questions.
You have your answers.
So.
Is there any other?
Ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, good for that. Do I have to sign in?
Yes. Yes, on that, please.
All right, so it's Tricia Adak, and it's 1235 Horseshoe Trail, Phoenixville. And actually, I'm one voice, but I see a lot of neighbors in the crowd, and we're here to thank you for your support in our fight against 190-foot steel lattice work microwave frequency tower with, complete with dishes and antennas that is being proposed to go in on top of Valley Forge Mountain. So, unlike noise and lights, once this goes up, there's no off switch. It's there, and I don't know how you'd ever get it out of there. The applicants, it's just come to our attention, that the applicants have chosen to do an end run around the local government and are proceeding to sue at federal level. I guess what happens is if you don't like the local ordinance and you don't like what the state says, you just pop up to the federal level, which in listening to discussions about ordinances tonight, you kind of even, there's a little humor in it because there is no ordinance if you say the local government has no authority to pass ordinances and that the state has no authority to pass ordinances. So, we are here because we've also just recently learned, or have been told by the applicants' council, that residents don't have any opinions and don't have a voice at the federal level. So, we're here respectfully and pleading that you intervene on our behalf at the federal level so we at least get a seat at the negotiating table. And I don't know if anybody else to add anything else, but that's all I had to say, and again, we thank you, Bill, you were masterful, we couldn't have, we couldn't have gotten to the, at least the state ordinance to the value.
Thank you.
Thank you for, very much for coming out this evening.
Yes, sir. Just a minute, Mr. Keller.
Mr. Keller, there's another gentleman first.
I have Members' Board, George Randolph. My wife Suzanne and I live at 1245 Horseshoe Trail, Schuylkill Township. I'd like to echo the Adax's thanks first for your help in our successfully opposing the 19-story-tall microwave tower that a property owner tried to put 150 feet over the township, Schuylkill Township line in this township in Tradifferent Township. Again, we got to live with it, that shows you the scale of what the applicant was trying to get through.
Make sure that the TV camera shows that, please.
19 stories tall, metal lattice work, that doesn't show you approximately 19 sets of antenna, rotating antennas that were supposed to be put on it. It's not an amateur tower, that's a commercial tower for industrial uses. The applicant, with your help and your solicitor's help, was successful in beating it back at the Tradifferent Township. I mean, I got to tell you, we're very appreciative, we don't ask you to pave the road, that stretch is private, we pave it, we don't ask you to plow the road, we get together as a group, we pitch in.
We'll be discussing it later.
In there.
Right.
We'd like your help again, at this point, in intervening again, one more time. We're concerned, especially because our fight is your fight. If the applicant is successful in saying local ordinances don't matter, I can use an FCC rig to put up a tower of whatever height I want, you're next. In there, right along there, is one of the residents that said.
Just, just a question, if I can, I, I know you're a lawyer, right?
On a good day. I'm also Marilyn Randolph's son, and I'm still excited that even though I'm hitting 60, so.
Yeah, I, I just, it sort of boggles my mind as to why you, you all, as, as a group, don't, don't have any standing in federal court.
Yes. Boggles all of us.
It's not clear that they don't, but it's a tougher standard to get into federal court than it is to get into the state courts.
We think we are, we're going to attempt to intervene. Quite frankly, we think township speaks and carries greater weight as a practical matter, but we are going to inter, we're going to try and intervene.
Thank you.
Have you considered forming an association?
We just learned of the suit from Plains Council yesterday.
For thanks.
The suit that's filed there, it, like all democracy here, even tonight, it takes a while to sort of coalesce and get a group. We got mobilized the last time, quickly, this one we were hampered by Thanksgiving holiday.
Mr. Randolph, I'd like to share with those in the township who don't understand the nature of what has occurred here. Someone, someone who is ostensibly a ham radio operator in Tradifferent Township had permission from the township to put up a 25-foot tower as, according to their ordinance. They gave him the variance to put up a 45-foot tower. Oh, no, that's not enough. As he showed you, he wanted a, is it 190, not 188?
No, it's a, it's essentially 188, 190, depending on.
This was opposed by the superintendent from Valley Forge Park, by our township, and very well represented by Bill Brennan, and the, the applicant was denied because it is the fall zone and there is a question about what, if it's going to be used for ham radio operator or some other use that has not been disclosed. The point is, it was denied in October by the Tradifferent Zoning Hearing Board, and I have to thank you and other residents of the area, because if you sneeze in this kind of, in this situation, you don't know whether you're in Tradifferent or Schuylkill, they're that close to each other. And to inform you, Jim, they didn't just talk about stuff, they paid for a legal counsel independently to work with Bill Brennan on this, and we thought it was all done and over with. Now, all of a sudden, on Thanksgiving, this guy has now bypassed the county court, bypassed the state court, and trying to get something done in federal court. So, I admire the dedication to do the right thing.
We like the area.
And, and for those of you who feel otherwise, I would like to add this, it's the principle here that somebody is doing something that is just not appropriate for any of us, and I would, for all of you at the Meadows, if you could imagine somebody in Lower Providence, well, we fought, we fought off the, the tower in the, in the Norfolk Southern right-of-way, but if you liken it to being a neighboring township, you've got Lower Providence very, very close to the Meadows, okay? Wherever it is, in whatever geographic location, someone shouldn't be allowed to circumvent the law and harm the environment in many, many ways.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. We realize that it's cost-dependent, we think, quite frankly, because the bulk of the laboring work.
I just have to add, being an old ham radio operator myself, I used to have to cut long, cut wires, long wire antenna, set up my own antennas.
It was a whipping tower, as it say, 10 foot, 20 foot, to correct the suit writer. The township was wanting to compromise and say, you know, we'll give you 65 feet.
Exactly.
You don't, you don't need anything more than.
I want everything, and 19 stories tall.
Depending on the little cow where you have and the atmosphere and such, if you want to get to Europe, or you want to get to China, or Far East, it depends on how you cut your.
Your solicitor did a very good job in crossing the avenue there, listed quite telling comment about exactly what did he want to thought the applicant in Italian, put in Italian language. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. This evening.
I'm Mark Samuels, Mark and Kimberly Samuels, 1255 Horseshoe Trail. Just want to echo the sentence, thank you, and we need your help again. These folks are doing everything they can to try and outlast this and, and find a way through to do what they want to do.
It's outrageous.
It really is, it's personal gain at group pain, and, and sets a terrible, terrible precedent for the area. So, thanks for your help, and hopefully we.
Thank you for coming up and saying that, thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Keller?
No, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Marilyn Gurrell, I live at 50 Horseshoe Point, not too far from where this monstrosity is proposed to be built, and I would like to echo my, my neighbors as well as thanking each and every one of you for your support in providing the solicitor. One thing that is of great concern to me that, to the best of my knowledge, has not been discussed during this, this whole issue, is the fact that this tower could ostensibly cause a lot of deaths to birds, because we are in a significant migratory bird path, and in terms of impacting birds that are migrating, it could be a danger to the birds. So, anything that you can do to help us fight this and not allow this to be built? So anything that you can do to help us fight this and not allow this to be built on our mountain where most people move to enjoy Mother Nature, we would be most appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to reassure you from the perspective is that the geographic location is on the mountain, but the principle involved here is township-wide.
Mr. Keller, go ahead.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Ron Callian. I'm here on behalf of Valley Forge Office Campus. I'm just following up on the meeting from last month. I was here to introduce to you a concept plan that my client, Valley Forge Office Campus, has. We're applying for a special exception, if you will recall, to convert two office buildings into a mixed-use ground floor on one building, office use, and the remaining two floors on the first building and all three floors on the second building to residential use.
Davis Road.
Yes, this is on Davis Road, near the intersection of twenty-three. We had a good discussion last month.
Yes.
You all seemed, if not expressly in favor, not in opposition of the project. My recollection was from the last meeting, you said when you actually get around to filing your special exception application.
Please, sir.
Yes. One, that we recommend that in light of our creative argument on the ground floor use to requesting the alternative, a variance, in case of the interpretation of the zoning hearing board was not in line with ours. We have done that. We filed the zoning application, which included the special exception request and the variance request. We have a hearing scheduled for Monday evening, this coming Monday, December eighth, at seven thirty. So the fact that we have filed the application, I'm here this evening to either get a formal, a formal decision on your behalf, either to affirmatively support the application or at least take a vote in action to not oppose. And if that is the case, if I could respectfully request either correspondence from your able legal counsel or Ms. Berg, just indicating same, so I can take it with me to the zoning hearing on Monday evening. Just so you're aware, a copy of the application was sent to your counsel. I assume that you have also received copies of it. You have to submit eight or ten copies of the application. And just to confirm on the record that the application is in line with exactly what we discussed at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Well, a couple things. I discussed this with Mr. Callian. Generally speaking, townships don't get into the business of recommending approval of zoning applications because the, there's some indication that that might be interfering with the job of the zoning hearing board, which is a separate body. We don't tell them what to do, and they would resent, I think, being told what we think they should do. Under the law, however, this board is entitled to formally oppose any application before the separate zoning hearing board, which is an independent body. The only other concern I have is, you know, if you take a formal vote, you're bound by it. And, you know, should there be some new information that develops later, you know, then you might have, not regrets, but you might have to undo what you did if things change. So most townships I deal with take no action if they feel they're not going to oppose it, and that's generally enough for an applicant to go to the zoning hearing board and say, went to the supervisors, they're not opposing it, they're not here. I think formal action can backfire.
And, you know, that's fair enough. I'm here to make the, you know, the request, and if you elect to not take formal action, obviously, any of you are free to show up at the after hearing to listen to your personal opinion and to see, you know, basically what to let it be.
Could you comment on the reason for the second building or the higher building, if you will, having the ground floor as residential and what the benefit is for that?
Well, what we would actually do is to remain within the spirit and intent of the ordinance is to actually target the residential units there for what we would say, folks who would use it for their units for a home-based business perhaps, home occupation, like a studio. So we would like to target, you know, those types of residents for that ground floor, again, to retain the spirit and intent of having a ground floor office or quasi-business type use. The overriding reason is the fact that the, this particular area, these particular units, these buildings, this location...
What's the date of the...
It is just, it's just not, I went back in the maybe early seventies, it's just not marketable to lease it for, you know, office space, even the whole ground floor.
It's good to hear that you're encouraging home-based businesses on that upper building's ground floor.
Yeah.
But I remember you saying that you'd also have some actual physical walking connection, I think?
Correct, yeah, yeah. We're looking at it, and we are willing to certainly build a kind of a canopy connecting the two buildings together, provide for covered access in between the buildings, since there will be some interrelationship between the two physical plants, basically treating it as more cohesive unit. For example, on one side, in one building, the mailroom will be centrally rotated in one building. There won't be a separate mailroom in two buildings.
Okay.
So again, the buildings will be physically connected by a canopy.
But this is an open air pen?
Yes, yes, yes. We're not gonna connect it with walls.
Okay.
It would just be, you know, an overhang.
Like a pavilion?
Yes.
I think it's an improvement.
And it also can make us...
Having taken that road for the past forty-two years to get to my home, I know many people who've had offices in there, and I would think a more vibrant mixed use like this would be a positive thing.
Sure. And we've also, you know, received some feedback from various sources as to kind of sprucing up the aesthetics, particularly...
More green, a little bit?
Which we're gonna do, and maybe the appearance, you know, the paint, you know, we can investigate, you know, doing a more neutral color, not the white, which gets dirty right away, getting something, you know, more beige or tan, something along those lines.
That would be great.
Do you envision any incentives for the home-based business to locate on the ground floor?
Incentives is the way I, a random combination or something. You know, that's something we certainly, you know, look into. We were just, we're going to funnel and target that floor for those types of uses, mainly also because, you know, the easier access for public if anybody is coming in there, it's anybody that owns a business that you will, they'll be right in there on the first floor rather than having folks going through the entire, the entire building. We obviously want that.
Okay, thank you.
We're not...
You can tell the board you were here and they took no action.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you. And again, Monday evening, seven thirty.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Keller?
You're up, Mr. Keller.
Did you read? Mr. Keller, did you read the Frank Newholm's answer?
He's getting it now.
Hang on. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
This will answer all of your questions. The letter that you sent from...
Who?
Frank Newholm's.
Oh, okay. I saw it. It wasn't here, did it?
No, he was unable to attend tonight.
I don't see him even listed on here.
He wasn't able to attend tonight.
No, but I mean, he's not listed on...
Well, do you have Yerkes on there, right?
Where? I don't see it.
I don't know what you have there.
It's just like what your tax dollars are paying for, nothing.
What do you have there?
Nothing. Let me tell you about Yerkes. He was here last month, and I questioned the safety of the homes on thirty-two and thirty-three Terrace Drive, and he said they were safe. I dropped off a note Monday asking him to give me that in writing. I mean, if you want to shoot your mouth off, back it up.
Was that a comment towards me?
No, no, him.
Okay.
He said they were safe, and I said, well...
He's got that, he gave it to you all in writing there.
I thought this was a, wait a minute, this was a letter from, I asked you for a letter from Mr. Pfeiffer, a copy of it.
You got a letter from Mr. Pfeiffer.
We have his letter. Okay, let's get back to Yerkes, okay? There's a couple problems that, I'll give you my, a little background with my experience with Mr., with Arcoin Francis, that's his first name. We met about two months ago down in the township building for a conversation, and we were only a couple minutes into the conversation when he says to me, he's a good friend of, Andy Pfeiffer is my good friend. So I went, put my hands up right then. I'm done. I'm not going to get anywhere with this guy. But we'll go further. There was a home they put on in nineteen Second Street, a brand-new mobile home. It's supposed to have straps on the sides of the home, five straps on both sides. He never, he was never there. I was there and I watched them when they finished it up. They put no straps in there, and I don't think they put any straps in the other homes on Second Street and First Street. Also, and that's part of, that's part of the ordinance, that these straps must be on there. Going into another subject...
Was that something different than you requested in your letter? Was that in the letter that you sent?
I mentioned that, the straps. Well, if it's not in there, don't worry about it.
Did his letter not address all of the issues that Mr. Keller has raised?
Yes, it does.
It's six, yeah.
So then I don't need, see the need for this repetition?
Okay, well, I'll go past the straps. Okay. Now we'll go to the homes on Street Road, twenty-three and twenty-five. Two dilapidated buildings that have been there for years, they're owned by Mr. Pfeiffer. They have never been secured, they caused...
They're, well, what I heard is they're no, they're not part of the Phoenix Mobile Park. They're their own separate entity. They're two individual homes.
They're in the township.
The grass is kept cut if Mr. Keller has, blah, blah, blah.
You have an ordinance that says it's about main, you can't maintain a dilapidated, dilapidated structure?
He has, he has a permit to demolish it.
How long has he had that?
Doesn't matter. He has up to, he has up to five years.
So when's the township gonna force him to do it?
We can't force him.
Oh, you can't force, because he has big bucks, you can't force him to do anything.
Mr. Keller, state your issues properly.
That's exactly what it is. It's about money. He's got the money so he can get around these things. Okay, let's go back to the grass ordinance that you have in this township. The weed ordinance, I mean. The weeds are supposed to be a certain high, they're supposed to be, not be toxic. Mr. Yerkes has never done anything to enforce that. The Levine brothers have gotten away with this for years, and that corner there, nothing but weeds. Nobody took action. Certainly, the code enforcement never took any action against them. Why?
That nuisance, from my understanding, is gonna be no problem going forward because someone's gonna be farming that land.
That's what I'm saying to you. Why wasn't something done years ago? You could have forced him. If they didn't want to cut the grass, you're gonna get somebody from the township, they cut the grass, send Levine the bill, and if he didn't want to pay, then you put a lien against his property. It's done all the time. You just don't want, you just don't want to enforce your ordinances. That's just the way it is.
There is no ordinance on...
Don't tell me, you've got toxic, you've got a toxic weed acts, ordinance about toxic weeds. You had a poor guy...
Taken whatever...
This is not accurate information.
Exactly.
The, your reference to toxic weeds, that section of our ordinance defines them but doesn't specify what action is to be taken with them, okay? Now, that said, there is a state statute that also applies, and that's why we went to the state to try to persuade the eleven brothers to do the right thing and get their grass cut. Fortunately, out of heaven someplace, this farmer comes along and asks if he could farm the land and...
Cuts the fields.
The beginning of this thing, at least, is he's cut everything down. Whether he's actually gonna farm it or not, we don't know.
That's true.
No, it's great that they cut it. It's great that they cut it.
All right. So we don't have a weed ordinance, per se.
You don't have any ordinance.
We've got a definition for noxious weeds, but we don't have it, we don't specify how to enforce it, unfortunately.
Why have an ordinance if you can't enforce?
Mr. Keller, really?
Okay, no, don't get, just cool. I know you're going to run out and smoke a cigarette. Just went and made one, okay? I want to direct a little...
I'm happy to give you the time with relevant issues.
I want to give you just a little, I want a little information for my own about you, Mr. Morrison.
All right.
The township spends a big money for open space, and it just so happens that this open space is right near your home, right? Is that right?
We've gone through this, the township's gone through this once before. What's this happening?
No, I know. What does, I'll tell you what it does, because those people in Meadow Brook Lane, their lives are gonna be turned around. Their lives are never gonna be the same. They had that beautiful golf course, that open space to look at. What are they gonna look at now? Concrete and athletic fields. You've taken their rights away that they had.
I think you're not aware of the state's definition of open space, which is fairly encompassing to include recreation fields. All right? So technically speaking, the open space is still there for the most part.
Not gonna be any buildings?
Well, they're planning, they're planning this concession stand thing, so, you know, that's the only building we're aware of in that...
Their lifestyle will come to an end, I guarantee you that. Come to an end.
It's time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Thank you.
This farmer that's gonna be, is he gonna be purchasing this property?
No.
No, he's just leasing it and he's gonna cut it.
From what we heard, he's, we don't even know. He cut it and he said he's gonna farm it. That's all we heard. We don't know.
That's all we know right now.
We don't, we don't, nothing, I mean, that's what we, that was told to us, that he's gonna farm it. Does he farm it? I don't know when he starts farming it, when he starts, but you're not gonna have the weeds issue if he farms it.
And I appreciate that. Why, why was it that the restrictions were put on us to maintain it, maintain our development, but nothing was put on the farm owners?
None of us was around when this took place.
Barbara, that is not an excuse anymore.
No.
It's not any, it's not an excuse. You're here today. You can do something, okay? When the development was built, we were all to have lighting, lights in our, right, you know, at the end of the driveway. Why is it that the two farm owners were not permitted to put a light at the end of their driveway? Do you, do you know that, Jim?
I know, I know what you're talking about.
Okay. Anyway, just want to mention that you have a lighting ordinance, and it talks about safety. Well, there was a report of a car, first of all, it's pitch black at the edge of the farmers, both farmers' lots, they don't, do not have lighting. Every household has a light, and we maintain in our Pickering Glen Homer Association that those lights be on, okay? There's no light there.
Excuse me, those lights are on the houses themselves?
On the edge of the street.
Or sand, on poles.
On poles.
On poles.
And none, none...
Well, you're, I have to say that Pickering Glen is a little unusual in that respect because we have a number of developments that have no lighting at the end of their driveways, okay? It's a mix, let's put it this way, it's a mixed bag, and I'm thinking particularly of...
Yeah, it is.
Yep.
It's, it's, it's... Mixed bag.
In the sense that some do and some don't, it was, it was not a necessarily requirement.
It was, and that's my question to you, is that...
For you, maybe.
No, it was a requirement in the, whatever the plans, that a light be put on each property, and there's no lights there. And, and there was a report recently, and the police were, were called about... And, and there was a report recently, and the police were called, about a strange car following someone down that street.
Okay.
Okay, so, and we also have had a squatter living in the other entrance, you know, the barn that he has, living in that location for, we don't know how long, that was arrested, okay? So, my question to you is, what is it that we can do to make sure that those, that it is properly lit in those areas? Because now we're getting into, you know, kids being dropped off at 5:00 and it's dark, that's a safety issue. We talk about kids and safety, that's a safety issue. What can you do about that, or what can we do about that, to get lights put in?
There is a process, Pete, for establishing construction of lights, it's like putting sewers in. In some townships, mostly large ones, I think they have it up in Marion and some of the larger places, where people will petition for lights, then the cost of the lights, though, needs to be paid by the residents, there's a light tax.
Right.
And the cost of installation is allocated among the various people, it gets expensive, PICO's involved in terms of design and things of that nature, so it can be a big project. And then, you know, you might have some people who don't want more lights, they, you know, they moved out to the country, they like it dark. So, you know, there are remedies, but, you know, nothing is easy when you need 50 or 60 people to agree. I don't know whether you have the authority, I don't know your documents, whether a majority can force it, or whether a supermajority can force it, I don't know. But the answer is petition for a light tax, but we don't want to go through all that until we know that everybody in your group is willing to pay for it. And I have no idea what it'll cost, you can probably get that information, call PICO, say, "We want to get into a situation with more lights, what lit cost, give us an estimate", maybe they'll send somebody out, bring it to us, we'll look at it, and if necessary, we'll, you know, we'll work with you. But we don't want to get into that until we find out that, you know, all or most of the people want to pay a light tax and to have the lights installed.
Okay, so, basically, we have to get a petition from the homeowners, and you're saying that we would have to pay?
Yes.
Why is that?
Because it's like sewers, when you, if you wanted to sewer your area, the sewers install, but they're paid for by the property owners.
They're not part of the association.
Who are you talking about?
The farm, the both farmers.
The two farmers? I don't know why they're not, and I came along afterwards, and it's come up several times, I don't know how that happened.
Who are they? What are their names?
Colkit and Levine.
Yeah. So, I don't know why they were not joined, something must have happened, I don't know and have researched whether you could force them in, I tend to doubt it. So, you know, it is what it is, you can hire your own lawyer and look into it, but I don't know that there's a solution. Now, if I'm tasked by the supervisors to research that issue, I'll take a look, I'll bill them, they'll pay me, and I'll come up with a memorandum and decide what, you know, what I think they can or should do. But I don't know the answer to that, and, and, you know, I think it's unfair, a little bit, Pete, for you to say to this board, "How did this happen? We weren't here." Now, I know you're saying you can fix it, I'm not sure we can fix it, but nobody on this board is responsible for those two large lots not being in the association.
I understand that, and I appreciate your response, but it does say, states specifically that all the homeowners, and them being included, there are homeowner, would have a street light, or a light at the end, it's in the, it's documented, and I can bring you that document.
All right.
So, so the bottom line is, and, and I know you're going to probably kick me out of here, but, and I'll keep saying this over and over again, is that the reason this happened was because we had a supervisor making decisions about our development that may have let it go, okay? And you're not, you're not here, but it has affected us, okay? So...
And we do...
And what do we have to do? Do we have to wait for that incident where a kid gets picked up at night, and then that happens? Or do we go be proactive and get something done now, before it happens?
What leverage would, would the association have on the two farmers if they were part of the association?
Well, I don't know that either.
The intent was, and I have the information, the intent was, and they're listed on the picture with the sheet that says, "48 homes and lot A, lot B, association."
I'm actually, I'm actually, wait a minute, I'm actually supporting you, I think, in this, in that, and John, maybe you can respond to this. When a subdivision is approved, part of the language that goes with that subdivision is a homeowners association, isn't it? Some kind of organization to...
A planned community, Doc, a planned community, Doc.
If there is to be an HOA, there are documents that are recorded establishing it, normally the developer controls it till after half of the house is sold.
And so, so there must be a controlling document on that, and since, since these landowners are, were part of the original tract, it seems to me that they should be members of this association.
Well, they're not, and somehow they fell out, there was some, there's some documentation, we looked at it when we had that Levine case, there's some documentation that makes it pretty clear that they're not members. Now, if you believe they should be, the homeowners association has a right to go in the court, ask for an injunction, forcing them in. But, you know, you have that right.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's not a winner, so maybe...
I don't think they, there were some homes in our development...
That aren't part of...
That are not part of this HOA, that weren't part of, that were in the, in the area, in the, in the original land, so...
And we don't have lights in our neighborhood. People individually can put lights in.
I'll wrap it up, Pete.
Just one last comment.
Required.
When, when we first had the association meetings, and if I were on the board initially, we would not, I would not be here today, we would not be here today, we would have had this, because I did all the investigative work. When I went to the meetings, Kim Colkit was there representing himself as being part of the homeowners association, our meetings, our homeowners' association meetings, making, you know, comments about what we should do, what we shouldn't do. Okay, we're like, okay, this is great. We all believed he was part of our association, and lo and behold, he leaves, you know, the development's done, and we pleaded, we begged with you, "Don't let him go, don't let Polte leave, they're not done." But I guess, you know, John had to let him go, and then all of this came about. But more importantly, bottom line is that Mr. Colkit knew exactly what he was doing, and he's not held accountable.
Just bear in mind, Pete, that also, we worked with you in the best way possible, way after the fact, in making sure that your walking path is more sustainable, we compromised to help you. Those of us after the fact.
Okay, all right.
Pete, my suggestion to you, if you haven't done it, is to go online, look at our, look at our code that's online, particularly the subdivision ordinance, particularly the homeowners' association related items, okay, in the, in the ordinance, to see if you can pick out something that appears to you to be violated, and, and if you can, then you've got some ammunition. If not, then maybe somebody else should take a look at it, but that's a suggestion.
But thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And in the township supervisor minutes, it states specifically that there'll be lights on every, in every household, and they're part of...
I'm just trying to get at the bigger picture here, because I really think that you're right, those two farmers should be, legally, part of your association. So, that, if you can establish that, then not only lights will be under, hopefully under your control, but other matters too.
And I know, I know what Bill's saying, "I'm going to open up a can of worms," and we're going to open up a can of worms, if we try to bring them in, so, and we thank you.
Hey, I did talk to the farmers that are going to raise pot.
Perfect.
Believe that, we will tell you another one.
All right, we're going to move into executive session.
Make a motion?
Do I hear you adjourn?
We can all...
Yeah, all in favor, yep.
We resume our Board of Supervisors meeting of Schuylkill Township. We went into executive session to discuss personal litigation, personal issues and litigation, and we're back in, and we have a motion on tasers?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the tasers for the Schuylkill Township Police Department.
To purchase them?
No, we already purchased them.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to authorize our solicitor, Bill Brennan, to petition the federal court to intervene in the, in the...
In the action of DePolo versus For Different Township at AL number 14-6689, and to represent the, and if the intervention is granted, to represent the township's interests in the case.
And to represent the township's interest in the case.
Second, Doc.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Make a motion that we honor the 2% reduction penalty based for Amy Keener at 154 McNallya Drive and her taxes due to a mistake that was made.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. I take adjournment of the meeting?
I so move.
Second.
I think we're all in favor. Okay.
Guys are wearing me out.